Yes, she's talking.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the Southampton Select Board meeting yet again. I think we do go home occasionally, but this is the meeting for April 21st at around 6:30 PM. And we will start by saying we pledge allegiance. Please stand. Okay, so we have just a couple of announcements here. We have Joey Piper, who's going to be absent tonight from the Select Board side. And then this will be a joint meeting with Finance Committee. And right now, a member of the Finance Committee and -- well, the -- yeah. Yes, a member of the Finance Committee and a member of the Select Board are actually upstairs at a Policy and Personnels Procedure Board meeting. And they will be down in about 10 minutes.
They'll leave at 8:10.
And you have to leave at 8 o'clock? Okay. We'll see how well we can get going here. So they'll be down. So with that, let's just get started here. Do we don't have any public hearings? Do we have any open time for the public? Yes, sir.
Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator. When I'm here in person, I'm here in person. When I'm not, I'm watching your own video later on in the week, especially the Finance Committee meeting. So this -- I'll be brief. This is to make my thoughts available to you for an annual town meeting in June. Number one, Governor Baker approved annual town meetings to be held in June. That's one plus. No new Select Board member after-town election date, most probable. Two pluses. We will need to meet in June anyway for a special town meeting. Three pluses. Four, you will have a whole month or so to be more efficiently massage your budget figures rather than force-feeding them into submission tonight. Four pluses. More time to fine-tune your discussion on the articles than all of nothing tonight. Five pluses. Town Administrator Ed Gibson will have more breathing room to create a stronger warrant with its accompanying explanations. In summary, six pluses. Our Police Department does not have to post the warrant copies with only one day left to make it legal. Seven pluses. And an argument can be made that COVID numbers may rise from May 3rd with our schoolchildren and parents traveling for a week or so now. Eight pluses. I cannot think of any negatives. I rest my case for an early annual town meeting, Your Honors. Thank you for listening. Cheers.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. All very interesting points. Thanks very much.
Yeah, really. I'm not speaking against it. I'm open to anything. But I do think there is one negative. I do believe we have a bylaw that says that the town meeting precedes the town election.
That is on the books. That is true.
That is true. But we had a situation with COVID that -- and I don't know. That's something to check. That's a really good call, Rainey. But with the governor allowing us to meet in June, I don't know if we can, you know, do that with a bylaw or not.
Well, and I think -- correct me if I'm wrong. Thanks, Robert. I think, Ed, last meeting, you had said that you had checked with our legal counsel. And in spite of -- in spite of that.
In spite of the bylaw.
We could still.
Their opinion was we could do.
You had to be.
We could go into June, but we have to have it done by June 30.
Yeah, definitely cannot meet any later than the end of June. So that's.
Right.
I didn't hear the last thing you said about two-thirds. Did you say?
Didn't say anything about two-thirds.
No.
No. We can go into June, but it has to be done by the end of June.
The end of June, okay. So in spite of the bylaw, legal counsel is in favor of that.
I just wanted to ask, did legal say that they would have to have it in writing as a court order?
What's that?
Did legal say that they would have to get it in writing as a court order to change the date?
No.
Oh, okay.
The only thing they had to get in writing to change the date of last year would have been the election.
Last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I have to put it in my dates for elections in the state computer. And it also has to go into DOR.
Well, we will probably discuss the date options tonight and see where we are. Let's see if we can have a pretty efficient meeting so we can make some choices, maybe, before we lose our quorum here. Or actually, we don't. John is back, so good. Thank you, John and Donna. Okay, so with that, if there's no more open time.
Before we move on, Vicki, did you want to call the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Do you need to order?
I was going right there.
It is 6:35 Thursday, June -- not June. We're just talking about June. April 21st, we call the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, very good. Yes.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there is a COVID vaccine clinic that's being held at Norris School Library next Wednesday, the 27th of April, from 4:00 to 6:00. You can make an appointment, but you also can walk in. And it's for any shot and any age that's eligible.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So I think what we will do, we'll just run through. There's a couple of things that we went through last meeting. I think we had a really good meeting, good discussion on Tuesday. Came to some good -- put forth some good thoughts in terms of where we could do some cuts and what we needed to double-check. Let's just take a run through the revenue sheet. I don't think the bottom line changed anywhere from what I'm looking at.
It changed at the last meeting. I had made one change going into the last meeting, reducing the use of the ambulance receipts reserved from appropriation from $200 to $100,000.
Right.
And then at that last meeting, which was all of just two nights ago, we made two other changes to it. We reduced the cannabis tax number from $75,000 to $65,000. And also changed the overlay from negative $125,000 to a negative $80,000.
Right. Right, so the bottom line in terms of our estimated revenue is the $19,077,000, I believe, right?
Yes.
$19,077,629. Okay, so if everybody's on board with that, that's where we ended up based on our last discussion on Tuesday night.
I have two questions. One is, I know you reduced the ambulance receipts reserved to 100. Does that 100 also include the $68,000 for the debt for the ambulance?
That would be all-inclusive because that would be what, at this point, I'm estimating is available to be used.
So you have 68, oh, 65 or so for the debt, and then you have like $30,000 for the general fund?
Correct.
So you have to make sure when you do the warrant articles, those two are separate.
Thank you. Okay, any other question?
Yeah, one other question. I guess I have two more questions. The overlay was reduced, and I have an idea what was left at the end of '21. Do we know what we used in '22? And did you talk to assessors? Are they going to have a spike because values are going up? Are people going to have an issue? I'm just curious if, do we know what the balance is in '22?
No. No, I've got the use for '21.
I was curious. Because at the end of '21, there was like 40 grand, and so I don't know what was used in '22.
I think there was more than that. Hang on a second. We went through this Tuesday night.
Yeah.
101?
According to the -- what we took off the state.
Off the state.
The DL. But that doesn't tell you what abatements are supposed to be posted against it.
For this year.
For '22.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So are you thinking the 40, is that year-end number plus the abatements being attached?
No, so you have 40 left from '21, then carry forward to '22. Then you put the overlay that was put in the tax recap into the allowance for abatements for '22, and then whatever gets deducted off of that would be your balance. I'm thinking it's probably enough, and 80 should be good, but I'm just curious if you knew anyway what that balance was.
Hang on, I'll see if I can get back in there again.
But again, it doesn't matter what the DLS website says. It matters what abatements were posted for the town against that overlay.
Right, the DLS doesn't have.
Doesn't have that information.
Right.
Gotcha.
That's just in there for what was presented at the end of, to do the tax recap.
Okay.
And then, I guess I'm coming back to this cannabis tax. So we've collected 18 and some change?
No, we've collected.
58, so that's been posted.
It's not posted yet. It's been receded, but not posted.
Yeah, we went through that last week. So we were comfortable going from 75 down to 65.
Send local tax from.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because again, that's one of those sticking points that the state's going to.
Yep. So we went from 75 down to $65,000 on that. And the overlay, we were at, I think, 120 or 125 last meeting, and we went down to 80.
Correct.
Right. Okay. All right, so with that, let's move into the actual revenue. I'm sorry, the budget sheets that I know you've done some changes on based on our meeting. So there were some, I don't know how we want to go through these, places where you've actually done some changes?
Well, we did some changes at the last.
Those were some of the notes.
Or some of the notes from the last meeting. So I'm trying to remember if we actually did change.
So a change would have been on the.
The only thing we actually changed since the last meeting in this spreadsheet was you had asked if I would check with the fire chief and see if a 70/30 split of EMS wages and fire wages was more appropriate than what was in there. He was amendable to that. So we went in and took the total amount of the two lines together and put 70% of that into the EMS wages and 30% into the fire wages.
But there were a lot of other changes that were made the other night. They're already made on there, right?
Yeah.
They're reflecting it because we're showing that.
Yeah, there were quite a few things moved over to ARPA. A couple of things moved over.
Right, and that we did at the last meeting.
Okay.
We took the good by $2,100.
Correct. That's where we finished the last meeting at.
Right. At what?
At a -- we were, had a positive balance of revenues over expenditures of $2,100.
All right, but a lot of wage things haven't been worked out. Right, and now we can take a look at some of the wage adjustment things that have been talked about based on some of the issues that came up during the meeting, right? So, okay, we're getting closer here. So 2,143 is where we had a variance last meeting. So then, I guess, maybe the -- there was a separate sheet you handed out tonight that has yours and Bradley's recommendations on it?
Yes, you gave Bradley and I an assignment, so we had taken the templates that John had worked on and Francine had worked on, combined them, and we came back with some potential recommendations. We've been through it twice. I would like to go through it a third time.
You want this sheet first, or?
Well, yeah, let's go through that first because, well, we came up with a total potential of, I think it was just under $50,000 for potential wage increases, so.
Could we project this sheet, then?
Yes, Brad.
Do you have that one? It's the one that you and Ed worked on?
So this is the one titled Reduction/Altering.
That one, yeah. No, no, he's got it. Okay, so this is the one that you all worked on today, so?
Correct. So what we did first was we worked on that other sheet and tried to extrapolate the information between John's template and Francine's template. And like I said, we came up with at least a proposal at this point to adjust wages by just under $50,000. Or by that, because of the addition of the 500 for the maximum, also including the election workers to a minimum wage on July 1st. And we added in $500, so it took it to $50,198. So if you go back to the other spreadsheet, please, Bradley.
So those are salary adjustments that we.
Salary and wage adjustments.
Talked about wanting to try and make, if we could do it.
Exactly.
Based on work that you guys had done with your spreadsheets.
And what I tried to do is come up, actually work to actually come up what I thought would be at a maximum to try to get us where we should be all at one shot. And that's that $50,000 number. And then to try to find a way to, you know, make further reductions to the budget or move some of the items that are in the operating budget to ARPA or possibly other funding sources. So that top subtotal, which totals, and I'm sorry, but my eyes are getting worse, 69.
Is that a little bit bigger, Bradley? Just a tad?
It's okay, it's me, I know it.
Oh, no, it's hard with the light on there, too. Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Perfect.
So by going to a, in my budget submission or request, I had assumed staying with a three-year lease. If we go to a five-year lease, which I think is advantageous for both the Police Department and here at Town Hall, that would be a $1,000 reduction to that line item due to going to a five-year lease instead of the three-year.
And this would be the first time that fire and Town Hall are together on the photocopy?
Police.
I'm sorry, yes, police and Town Hall are together on the photocopy, so that is a consolidation?
Yeah, that comes out of the Cost Efficiencies Committee.
Yeah, okay.
Treasurer collector wages, what is in that other spreadsheet is a recommendation to go to a 36-hour week, which would essentially be a half a day on Fridays for the treasurer collector. The other side of that would be the treasurer collector had put in there if, the possibility if going to further hours on the Friday of reducing some of the hours in the administrative clerk's position in that. So if that was the case, that would reduce the treasurer collector wages by $10,128.89. By using, going to 36 hours a week and utilizing the numbers in what John's template was, instead of a 40-hour week, that had extrapolated out to an $805.20 reduction from the $60,000 request that they had in there. Veterans benefits, I was able to talk to the veterans service officer, and he had anticipated two new veterans coming on board. That's why the $5,000 was in there. However, we found, he found out that neither of the two veterans that were applying to come on were actually eligible. So that goes back to, I believe it's the $20,000. That's a $5,000 reduction. So in reductions, that would amount to $16,934.09. Now, in the bottom part, some ideas that we may be able to shift out of the operating budget for one year and a maximum of two years with the ARPA funds would be the Sharps program, which is $3,000. And again, potentially move that to ARPA or another funding source. Mosquito control at $5,000, the same. OPEB actuarial study, which is 3645, we could move that under loss of revenue into ARPA. Police Department expenses, the bulletproof vests for $5,500, we potentially move that either into ARPA or if we're able to get a grant fund to do that, move that there. Police Department maintenance, there's support for the messaging boards and the radar signs in that account, which is a total of $4,900. Same thing if we remove that to ARPA or, and I think it would be ARPA. I don't think we'd be able to get a grant for that. That's $4,900. Assessor town maps are $4,500. We could move that into loss of revenue from ARPA. The reverse 9/11 system, that's $4,192.50 for fiscal year '23. Again, we could move that potentially into ARPA funds. And then the Open Space Committee expenses of the $500 that were in there, we could move that to ARPA under loss of revenue. That would total $31,237.50, which those two columns total 48,171.59. We had, which is a deficit, would be a deficit of $2,027.14. The current positive revenue over expenditures in the totals of the budget requests that we had was 2,143.37. That would leave us at a positive position of $116.23 in the, in that operating budget.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks for doing that. Can everybody speak loudly so we can all hear? This acoustics in this room is just terrible.
I know the original request from Open Space was $1,000. Did we already decide at the last meeting to decrease that to 500?
Yes.
Is that consistent with other committees? I think that was one of the questions that came up. Is that?
I would basically say that most other committees are zero-based.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what about the conservation agent? Was that?
We had moved that at the last meeting out of the operating budget and said that that would be something that could be ARPA-eligible.
Is there anything else that we talked about for ARPA that's not on this list that we should probably add just so that we, so the conservation agent, is there anything else that we?
Thought we had talked about the planning board expense, too, the $15,000.
Planning board expense, yeah. I don't know if I can go back through.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to.
Switch to the total sheet, Bradley, and go back through your notes and see if there was anything else there we had noted that.
Yeah, there was like $25,000 from.
MSO, MS. Yeah.
MS4, yeah.
So the MS4 and the planning board were the two that come to my mind when we talked about them as moving toward ARPA.
Yeah, all that stuff's going to ARPA. And we're saying in addition to that, this is the new stuff that was on the other sheet that's going to ARPA. So both pools of money are going to ARPA.
Oh, this is in addition to that?
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Right. I just wanted to remember, just because it's not an unlimited amount of money, I just wanted to see, would it be already, already suggests shift?
I got you.
Right.
But just on the Open Space, though, we left, they asked for 1,000.
Right.
We left 500 in the budget, and we're saying that other 500 to give them 1,000 is coming in through ARPA.
No, I'm saying that the 500 that was left in the budget is coming from ARPA.
In other words, we reduced it to 500.
But if you go to line 50 here.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about putting the whole thing in ARPA at one point in time.
You have 500 in the budget.
That was from the last meeting. That was the reduction from 1,000 to the 500.
In other words, he hasn't changed it yet until it's approved, I guess.
This is how we sat after the last meeting.
I'm with you.
And rather than making changes.
If we approve that other list, you're going to pull, you're going to pull that equivalency out of here.
Right, rather than doing the exercise of changing anything within the workbook, which would flow to the totals.
Yeah.
I know this is all operational off of that theoretical template of wage adjustments.
Right, no, I'm up to speed now.
Okay, all right. Right, right. So in the, in the previous discussion on ARPA, it was the CONCOM agent, it was the planning board contract person, and it was MS4. Those three for sure. And what did we do finally in the, in the budget? Did we reduce the audit finally in here now?
It's, yes, we reduced it to $31,000.
Yeah, I see that. From 36.
From 36, okay.
Did you talk with them about it to get it down, or?
This is for '23, I think that's what it was.
This is, right.
It was originally reflected as.
'22 is, '22 is the nightmare. That's our problem, right?
Yeah.
'22 is still 36, right?
Correct.
So '22 audit will be $31,000.
Correct.
No, no, '22.
Budget, but it's actually the audit fiscal year '22.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this year was never, it was, it was last year.
Of course, I'll let assume we signed the three-year contract.
Yeah.
It involves year one.
Okay.
So how does moving the reverse 911 to ARPA money, usually when we have apply for the EMPG grant versus the emergency grant, that has been something that's been the match piece? And I don't know, because they want you to match, it's got to be in the general fund, so you might need to find other things to use for a match to be able to get that grant.
Is that one of the criteria, that it needs to be in the operating budget?
It needs to be a match, yes.
Yeah, and it can be that, or it can be volunteerism also, so.
There's a whole list of things.
There's things, yeah.
But this is the easiest thing that, you know.
So maybe Bradley back on that other sheet, or whoever's got the sheet control, just on that other one, just to put an asterisk or something saying, there's certain, the reverse 911, you know, just a question mark as to, but if we didn't use it there, then we've got to come up with that money. I mean, all of these are going to be ongoing costs, right? I mean, the assessor town maps is every year, the support for the message boards is going to be every year.
Yeah, all of these will be ongoing.
That's my, that's my concern a little bit because these aren't one-time.
Donna, if you're going to speak, you're going to have to drag your microphone to you.
Yeah, hit the mic.
Sorry.
These aren't one-time costs, and so what happens next year when we fund all these from ARPA? Not only do we have the increases that we're making by moving these, but we're going to have these recurring costs, too. So it's going to be twice as hard next year.
Correct, but, I mean, the hopes would be, right, there's enough new growth coming on with the developments to offset it. And generally, I would go with you on that and agree with that, but doing this allows us to right the ship on the wages, which I think.
I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just cautious. I mean.
I mean, maybe a crutch is whatever this number is that we end up using, that we should plan on 50% of it, retain it in ARPA for next year because we can use it for the next six months and then we're done to kind of ease the, give it a year and a half.
Yeah, I would look at these as two-year bridges, and then we've got to move out of it.
But, I mean, Donna raises a valid point. If we don't have the new growth, if we don't have the other revenue sources coming in, you know, we're kicking the can for a short period of time. The reason to do that is to right the ship on all the, on the non-collective bargaining agreement employees.
Correct.
Which we had said was our high priority, to try and do as much as that as we could. We wanted to.
And at this point, I haven't heard anything where we're reducing any hours. We may not be increasing hours where everybody wants them. We may not be adding new positions to the level that everybody wants. But so far, there isn't a single thing up before us that is reducing services from what they currently are.
Right.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So the logic behind, again, forgive me, I wasn't feeling well, Tuesday, the 36 hours for the positions because, you know, is that just a way to get more money for people or to, I guess I'm, I'm.
No, my, I mean, the reason, I can say, well, the reason I'm supporting it is because right now, the finance team is behind. We're behind on PAC, on, posting's not happening, or PAC is not being done. We're behind on the reports coming in. There's a sum department, I mean, we have a new accounting department, we have a shortage in the treasurer collector's office.
So that's the reason why things are behind. It's not because people maybe need more hours.
Well, I think in general, we've talked before at the various meetings where they've presented to us, and I think it's been pretty clear that there's not enough time in the work week currently at 32, 31 hours to do the job.
So the thought of having a half-day on Friday, Town Hall remains closed, the finance team, the four of them are in here together, they can have their weekly meetings that day when uninterrupted, they can get through this stuff.
Yeah.
A year from now, there should be a one-week delay on packets, as an example, right? Because this is what they've said they need in order to get done, they need to be able to allocate more time.
I think I, you know, if I support that, then I don't, I don't think that cutting the clerk in the collector treasurer's office by 11 hours a week is going to benefit that department because then Jen just is going to, there's going to be more to do. So even having an extra four hours is not going to, if she's having to do more of the day-to-day task because there's that many less hours being done.
I would trust that to the department manager, that decision of what's going on in that internal office.
But I don't believe there's a cut. I don't think there's a cut.
Yeah.
And at least what's before us here is not adjusting those hours down.
It's in the, it's in the, where they're going to find the money.
It is reducing the hours down to 19.
Second line on item.
Since we have Jen, our collector collector here, go ahead Jen.
So I've realized since I've been here that, and since, well, even let's just say since Robyn's been in the position, because she's only in there 15 hours a week max, that the outer part of the office is still like keeping up. It's, I'm the one that needs more time. And I think it's been like that for a while because I think even, you know, prior to me being here, reconciliations were behind, postings were behind by a good three to four months. So I don't think, you know, I'm like nervous.
Yeah, that's good.
So, yeah.
No, I think we heard you, the time when you presented too, just saying that you thought that there was a lot of work that was in your bailiwick that only you should be doing, that you weren't able to do, that you were always feeling like you were behind and that in order to make it happen, you still needed the admin support, but maybe not to the level that you'd had it.
Correct.
That's what we had understood, that's why.
She has the experience now of having it worked at a reduced level.
Right.
Not available, so.
I also think that from the assessor's standpoint, having been their liaison, I honestly think that we, there's things that were not being done and I think that there is an opportunity to bring in more revenue through the assessor's office, through, I mean, just the personal property tax alone seems like it fell behind a lot.
Yeah. So this would essentially put the finance team, the way I'm understanding this, the finance team, so the treasurer collector, the accountant and the assessor to 36 hours a week. So an extra four to five hours, right? Is that right? From 30.
I mean, you can't argue the fact that we're growing and we have now two precincts and there's more of everything, more taxes, more everything.
Yeah. And I think certainly if town hall remained closed and, you know, they were here to do their work for those extra four hours, I mean, I think that, and they would have a chance at the end of the week to kind of meet together and see where things are and where it's falling behind or who's needing help on something or, you know, and also sort of plan ahead in terms of what's got to be the highest priority for the following week. I mean, you know, to have an uninterrupted time to do that, I think would be beneficial myself.
Well, if it keeps our financial reports more current, then everybody's going to be able to make better decisions because we're going to have more current information, which we haven't had, in all honesty.
Which we've been saying forever.
Hearing about new financial software too is, I mean, that would go hand in hand, I think.
Yeah, and that definitely is something on the ARPA, ARPA list and through the tech committee. We're working to get some meetings scheduled with the two vendors to come in and talk to, to the finance team and Ed about that. So that is a change that will hopefully be coming along.
It is.
Later in the year here too. So, any other thoughts and questions while we're chatting here?
One other thing is, is the treasurer collector's elected. So I don't know that you can put time, hours on her or those elected positions because really, in essence, they can come in 10 hours a week. Not that Jen is or Lucy is, but they can come in however many hours they want, so.
We mentioned that on Tuesday.
You know, it's just a matter of, you know.
We realize that. I think it's a theoretical.
Yeah, I'm just.
It's zeroing out here.
Yep, no, that's true. Definitely true.
You still have to base it on something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, I did that job in 30 hours for eight years, so.
Okay, so these are some suggestions in addition to what's already gotten us to that almost balanced level, right? That's what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Anybody have any thoughts about anything that really shouldn't be on here? I mean, I think we're all recognizing that this is a stopgap measure and that this is not going to cover all of our ongoing costs forever and ever and ever. But to the extent we can defer a few things from another funding source, give us a little bit of breathing room to hopefully increase some revenues from whichever angle we can, this would be the time to do it, I guess. There's not too many other opportunities that would come along to, to do this. And Ian, while you're here, I may just pull on you in terms of the idea of putting the bulletproof vests out of the main budget into, hold on a second, out of that into either ARPA or through a grant, I don't know what your experience has been with getting the vests. We recognize you have to have them, I mean, no doubt about that.
I believe I'll be able to do it provided that I get the transfers. I'll be able to do it out of this year's budget.
Good, okay.
Through wages, I'll transfer money into wages.
But just to be sure.
Yeah.
So if you're able to do that, next year comes up, there's not a new batch coming through that you'll need.
There would only be one or two.
Make a note.
Yes.
So you might make a note.
So I don't, I don't believe even ARPA funds would be, would account for this.
Have you been able, have you ever gotten a grant to do those purchases?
I've never had to, I've never submitted them yet, but I've never made any large.
Are there, are there grants eligible, yeah, are they eligible for grants?
It's a federal grant that pays 50%.
Yeah.
Yes.
80%?
50%.
50%.
Yes.
Okay, so you might be able to do that out of existing funds for the.
So I'll be, I believe I'll be able to, so long as my articles go through, I'll have enough in my expense account, the way I worked it, I was taking out of transferring some money out of my, my wage budget, which I have a surplus in for that reason.
Good, that would be good.
Okay.
Okay, so that, but not for the radar signs messaging thing, probably.
Well, that contract is in mid-year next year, so I wouldn't be able to do it through my current budget.
Yeah, okay.
The other question I have, you know, the, not to you, I'm sorry. Just in looking at the assessor's office, they, the consultant apparently, as he reported to us, has issued, you know, letters to companies, you know, mostly people I would guess are at-home businesses for personal property who hadn't been ever contested for that. So I don't know the results of that effort, I think it's too soon to tell.
It is too soon to tell.
But that should generate, you know, some additional revenue for fiscal year 23. I would think we would have it in place by then.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the things that we had talked about, one of the ideas at the cost efficiencies committee. I know Bradley, you were on that cluster and had been dealing with the assessors on that and they had found some other businesses that had not been notified, I guess, in the past. So it sounds like the list has become more complete and I think, again, just because of the changeover of people and the, you know, the lack of, you know, again, whether it's workload or whatever it is, but I mean, the attention to that in terms of its full extent maybe had not been done in the past.
And other properties too, I mean, you have neighborhoods where it's very imbalanced and there's more work to be done, that's why the inspections are starting.
Right, that too, so. Any downside about doing the maps out of ARPA? I mean, is, I mean, is there, I guess if we tried to do this, this lost revenue thing as the ARPA rationale, we don't really have to justify why maps, I mean, I'm trying to think of things that make sense, kind of semi-COVID related.
It's loss of revenue.
That one's kind of hanging out there for me a little bit, but, yeah. So you wouldn't really have to justify why then from what we're understanding.
And I tried to identify specific pieces.
Yeah.
Rather than breaking up and hodgepodge it a few hundred dollars here and a few hundred dollars there, so it's easier to identify what's on here and what is going to have to come back into the operating budget.
Right. Okay. All right. Any, any other questions, thoughts about this, this page? All right. Next then, do we want to take a look at some of the, some of the adjustments per the spreadsheets that you worked on or the John and Francine worksheets or?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah? John, did you have?
I don't have any.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, yeah. Did the finance?
I believe so.
All right, can you, do we have it right here?
Yeah.
We start here or is there, are they separate?
It should be a real big sheet that's probably.
So it was the last thing in the pack.
That's the hard one to read, that's why the screen is going to be better for you.
You know, I looked at this out, because you sent it electronically, but I just need to understand what the rationale is first.
So John, you started some of this, but I know Ed, you picked up both.
It's a combination of both, so.
What John and Francine had worked on?
John's is on the left and I'll let him explain it because I know he used compression and everything else on it. And then what I did over on the right-hand side, we had to cut and paste the pertinent information in, but it marries on the right-hand side what Francine had extrapolated from the Jacob study. So it brings in the proposed salary minimum for fiscal year 23, the benchmark for fiscal year 23 and the maximum salary, which would have been out of that study for fiscal year 23 to those positions.
Did you increase those for COLAs going forward because that study was done in 2015?
It had been adjusted.
It had been adjusted, 2%, okay.
To get to 22.
Okay.
And then we went from 22 to 22.
Okay, just checking because that.
It was pretty much 4% increase from what was on that original study.
Yeah.
You know, what'd be helpful is if there was an understanding of the different steps or whatever they call them.
They were the grade.
The grades.
In between, in the grades. I think, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the, on the chart that I had, I had job titles and then grade levels and it's up to the PQB whether or not they want to review that, but it's kind of a, like in, in one grade, you level, let's say grade three, you'll see someone who's, who's score was graded at a two and someone else who's at a seven and yet they're, they're still at the same grade level. I mean, it looks like there needs to be some, some review and some consistency there.
Well, I have it right here, we want to.
Well, you had it.
It seemed like it made sense to me, that's why.
The spreadsheet that Francine sent around after a meeting on Tuesday night?
Right.
That's the one you're talking about?
Yep.
Right, and that's the one we pulled the information and.
Right. Between that and John's.
Right, and married it, married it to John's template.
Yeah, hold on a minute. I had it here, hold on a second.
So can someone explain to me then, then therefore what you did? So you took the Jacob study, you increased it by 4% to account for what was presented to us?
Well, it was a little bit more than 4% because it was 2% and then another 2% based on the other 2%.
Right, right, right. So it was 2% and then that figure was added to another 2%. Right. And then you looked at the chart that's had the, the chart says current employee salary, proposed salary minimum, proposed rank benchmark and then proposed salary maximum. So you looked at the green level, which is proposed rank benchmark. So you compared where someone currently is, you came up with the proposed benchmark and that's what you were proposing for their salary?
I'm just trying to set some parameters.
I'm just trying to find out the process first. I'm just asking the process, that's all. Yeah, that's what you did, yes, okay.
Yeah, and then John had another process and so these, what's up here is a mixture of.
At least on the recommendation.
John, can you explain your process?
Sure, I took the list that we voted on sometime in July that were required to do annually and then plugged them in there and then did adjustments for the, looked at who was below the future upcoming minimum wage adjustment and then just you start working your way up from there and adjusting upwards and I don't like odd numbers, so you'll notice that pretty much every wage I put in ended in a zero.
Which column are you talking about, John, just so we're all following you? I'm sorry.
I'm A through Z. So A through, oh, I can't do that.
Yeah.
So what's the top?
Go to the top, so.
Yeah, you're A through Z with the exception that W is our added column.
No, I'm with you on that, but.
E is actual.
Is it my eyes or is that blurry?
R.
It's going to be a little bigger.
A through Q came from the treasurer's office and that, that's just a copy and paste from what we voted on in July. And then on R, let's say proposed fiscal year 23, right?
Right, in R.
So put in a proposed number and that's where I was alluding to the other night that the, these are just starting points and you can adjust as need be, but just take that first line, $20.50, it's a $1.22 increase, you need to back out the 2% that we already approved. The 2% is 39 cents, I think, off 1928. So the annual impact of that is $1.22 minus 39 multiplied by the number of hours they work in a year. If it's an hourly person, it's their biweekly times 26.12. And if it's annual, if they're exempt, then it's just by 26 pay periods. The impact in that is another $871.11. The overall increase would be a 6.33 increase to that line item. And then the green yellow, or, yeah, the green W, that's where Ed and Bradley took over.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm still not clear on, so you didn't do it across the board, you were comparing it to what? Your percentage is not across the board by grade. Can you explain how you got, why you came up with a, what chart did you use, like what, what benchmark did you use in terms of any position?
I did not use the Jacob study and I did not use that other study.
So how did you come up with your numbers?
Well, again, it's an arbitrary number that needs to be adjusted on how you feel it should be if you feel the number's inaccurate. If you don't think the assistant accountant should be paid $20.50, then you adjust it to where you want. I mean, that's the beauty of this job because we're anywhere between $11 and $24, we're within scale.
Yeah, so you're looking at it from the hourly rate rather than the percentage. You're looking at it from the hard figure rather than a percentage across the board that's consistent, shall we say.
Just assuming that got approved.
Yeah.
Now you've reset everybody, now you just apply COLAs on annual basis going forward, but you have to do it every year and you can't play with these numbers when somebody leaves. I mean, yes, you can come back down a few steps, but you can't have somebody at $20 and say, okay, new person's 15, no matter what it is. Maybe it's true if you get somebody green right out of high school and that's what you want, but.
I just don't understand why the percentages are so variable.
Because of the past, the sins of the past have caught up to us and I'm, and I'm suggesting that we correct it.
He's suggesting we sort of.
Nobody, nobody working for this town should be making 14, should be making minimum wage. I don't care what job you're in, unless you're, unless you're a high school student paying fire hydrants for the highway department during the summer.
I know that, we have twice raised the minimum wage in the last year. So that's not the point. I'm trying to understand, how did you come up with an hourly wage for each position?
Well, they already have an existing hourly range.
So how much did you raise it up and what, what, what did you use to come up with your proposed hourly rate?
The 2050 in column R in the first line, does that have a percentage on it or it's just a flat fee? It's just a flat number, right? So you didn't apply a percentage to the existing hourly?
No.
So you went from 1928 to 2050, how'd you get there?
I picked a number.
You picked a number, that seems very arbitrary to me.
It is in a way, but it is, but at least, he's putting out a benchmark, the way I'm understanding, he's putting out an ideal thing of, here's what we think these positions are based on somewhat in relation to where they are right now, but not.
And who their peers are within.
Not applying percentages per se, so that's where he's coming out.
I, the assistant town accountant, the assistant treasurer collector, the assistant or there's somebody else I'm forgetting, that has statutory authority to step into the department head's place and their, their signature has, has consequences to this community, they should be making more than the next step below them. And the next step below them here are what I would call clerks or you guys call them admins or assistants. But if somebody, if somebody has signature authority that will bind this community by statute, they should be making a little bit more. I, I think when I started this, I, my little bit more was a dollar to start and then you take that and you just adjust everybody to it. So if the, you know, the assistant, the assistant treasurer collector's at $21, but she's at 21, I'm assuming so she, she's at $21 because she's currently at 1975, you know? And so you go to 21, now she, now outside of the department head, nobody in that department should be making more than that position.
This is like just throwing everything up in the air and see where it lands, I mean,
You know, and so you go to 21. Now she, now outside of the department head, nobody in that department should be making more than that position.
This is like just throwing everything up in the air and see where it lands. I mean, this is kind of ridiculous. We paid to have a study called the Jacob study, which actually gave us minimum benchmark and maximum for each position in town.
Understood.
And I'm just, like, I'm just, I can never, I can't just say that, oh, I think this person should make this much money, so therefore I'm going to say this is the hourly rate. We have to compare ourselves to other towns with the same, like, position. I mean, to me, it just seems.
Well, why don't you take a look at column R and compare that to the three, the min, the benchmark, and the maximum over on the right-hand side and see where that number falls.
Because the ones on the far right.
Bradley, for a second, can you hide columns S all the way over so we can kind of see them side by side, please?
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking. What are we comparing it to?
So this is what John has put forth based on not applying percentages. Then take this right-hand side, which is what Francine was trying to do, right? From the, from the Jacob study, they put out the minimum, the benchmark, and the proposed maximum with the 2% increases for '22 and '23.
Right. So, you know, for example, that first position, the assistant accountant at 2050, the proposed salary minimum in 2023 is 1785, the benchmark's 2232, and the proposed salary maximum was 2856. So it falls somewhere between the minimum and the benchmark.
So Bradley, maybe if you could just highlight column Q with a different color so we could see what's.
I'd feel much better about this if we just decide where do we want to meet the benchmark? Do we want to go between benchmark and maximum and have a consistent?
Well, I think we may get there, but we have to see what, what this looks like right now. This is the first stab to look at what this really has shown us, because we're trying to not just do every year, do three or four people. I think what John is trying to do is to say, okay, let's, let's just do it and get it done.
I want to do everybody, but I want to have a system that actually is compared to some benchmark.
Yeah. Sorry, Bradley, I meant, I meant column, column R, not Q.
If you're going to take the mid, you then have to apply, okay, this person's a five-year employee and this person's a zero-year employee, so.
Or the person, or the person's a 15-year employee and probably should be up towards the maximum.
Right. Yeah. Well, I support doing that too, but I don't support just arbitrarily saying, let's raise it to this, let's raise that one to this, let's raise that one to that. I mean.
Okay. But looking at the first three, so the first three there, we are in between, sorry, we're at a little bit less than the benchmark on the first two, first three. We're between the proposed minimum and the benchmark, right? The way I'm reading it?
Correct.
And the same with COA van driver, van driver, whatever there.
Can't sign this one if we're going to cut it.
Same.
Or that were under the minimum.
I would look at it and see how.
Yeah.
To the proposed benchmark.
But I don't know why we're not starting from the benchmark. And by the way, why didn't PQB approve this as a committee? It seems crazy to me that we're held close to the town meeting and we're going over individual positions and deciding where their rate should be as part of the budget for a town meeting that's supposed to happen. And like, isn't this the deadline or are we going to decide to go to June?
We may have to talk about going to June. Robert came up and gave us all the reasons why we could postpone to June.
I mean, why are we doing this as a select board? Shouldn't this happen in the PQB?
Well, it's before us now, Renee. I don't think we can go backwards on this. I mean.
But this was just a.
Well, and I'm, I'm, go ahead, Francine.
This was just an attempt to have a plan that we can work towards achieving from minimum to maximum and have, you know, and make it realistic enough so that people who work here can see and envision what their future might look like. The numbers can change. It's, you know, we could agree on that. But we need to, I believe we need to have a plan so that there are some expectations that we can meet.
And I agree. There is, this is a starting point. And previously, this body rejected the idea of PPB taking up this process. Instead, directed the town administrator to submit an ARPA application to conduct an outside study by the, probably the Dunninghue Institute, which would delay this another year. So we then voted to do, let's do the token 2% and make everybody feel good and kick the can down the road another year. Step number one is say, okay, assume these numbers. They are assumptions, which means they are just placeholders on my side. What is the worst-case scenario? It's $30,000 or whatever it is. Can we make that happen? Yes or no? Then we get into the individual positions. When we start putting names in there, it gets very personal and we shouldn't have that conversation. Whether PPB should do it or this board should do it, it doesn't matter. The authority lies with this board at the end of the day. We're at the last minute and constantly for the past two years or three years, this is what it's come down to. And I think for one, love it, hate it, vote it up, vote it down, I don't care. But let's make a decision and move forward one way or the other.
Okay. So just so you know, when Art Lawrence presented this to us, he said, start somewhere. And we did start somewhere. We had wage increases. We approved the EMTs. We approved minimum wage times two. And we improved the lowest paid workers to get raises last year. And we put additional people in a override, which did not pass. I would support what Francine suggested and we go through and we come up with, everybody moves to benchmark. Anybody that's been here for X number of years or more goes to the maximum. But we have to match it against something.
But we can't put people, I mean, yeah, we can put people at maximum. You put them at maximum, they'll never get another raise.
Yeah.
Right.
No, 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 no. There has to be a plan for that in that way.
Yeah, I don't know that we can do maximum all at once. I think benchmark is where we should.
The point I'm saying is that we, we basically come up with a plan where we use a study that actually compared us to many other towns within this, within a position as opposed to just coming up with a figure on, you know, out of the blue.
No, but periodically, even annually, we should be updating this information.
Correct. You can't rely on a seven-year-old study.
No. It should be updated every year.
Well, this was updated.
An arbitrary number either.
No, the numbers that were in the study that aren't revised were 2020 numbers. We adjusted only at 2% for each of the subsequent years.
Right.
Not just the current sal, but all, all the, all the goals, yes.
Did the Art Lawrence study or whatever it's being called, because Jacobs was seven years ago. Then there was the Art Lawrence study. Did that Art Lawrence study go through the process through PPB and the public hearings and all that? Or was it just done here at the select board, which now being told shouldn't be done here tonight? Then it should go back through the proper process.
Okay. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, why are we at the last minute here?
People are taking initiative to try and help us move forward with some sort of salary adjustment. I appreciate both John and Francine's effort to try and put some figures on paper and Ed and Bradley's time to combine those to see what the impact might be. We haven't said that we're going to adopt these yet. We're trying to look at what it means. These are the first time we're seeing these figures. So the proposal by John is in that R column that's highlighted. And just to take a look at where we are with, with the benchmarks here, you know, what makes sense. We're still under the benchmark on those beginning ones, the way I'm seeing it. So if we said that we really want to head toward the benchmark, then the first half dozen I'm seeing are right there, all the way down to, maybe down to CPC histor, no. Sorry, there's too many columns in between. I'm getting lost. Benchmark is what? Youth Librarians 23, 20, okay. So that's still within 21. So maybe as of, is it, yeah, it is the CPC historian library is maybe over?
Well, that's a grant position.
That was a grant one, wasn't it?
A grant position, right. So that's a little bit over the benchmark.
Right. That's a little over the benchmark.
So you're comparing, starting with the top, assistant accountant currently is making 1966. The proposed salary is 2005.
2050.
So that's not the proposed minimum. It's not the proposed benchmark.
It's less than the benchmark. It's still within the benchmark. It's between the minimum from the Jacobs and with the adjustments of 4% essentially, right? Since the study was done, since it was presented to us by Art Lawrence, I wouldn't call it the Art Lawrence study. I think it's still the Jacob study presented to us by Art Lawrence.
The updated Jacob.
Right.
It's called the Classification Compensations Study for Non-Union Positions. It was presented February 2020.
So this has had adjustments last year for the, for the 21 time. Now we've got 22 and 23 adjustments of total of 4%. That's still getting us, we're not yet at the benchmark. This may be all we could possibly do, given our money. We don't know yet, but we are staying.
That particular position.
I'm sorry?
That, that particular position, that employee is in year one. So it's understandable that they, they should not, potentially not be at the mid, at the benchmark point, right?
Which, which, I'm sorry.
The first position.
Right. Your salary scale should look like a parabolic curve.
Yeah, no, understood.
Okay. The benchmark is dead in the middle of it for someone. And depending on how long you've looked at your steps, whether that's 10 years or 15 years, that benchmark should be in the middle. And basically, that's at the top of their increasing earning potential. And then from that point to the maximum, that actual percentage change every year, it gets smaller and smaller.
Right, right.
All I'm saying is that I think there should be a systematic way of doing this. So if we're saying that someone's been here for one to two years, then they would be this much above the minimum. If someone's been here for three to six years, then they should be at the benchmark. You have to understand how many times we've got into trouble because of this process.
I don't disagree with you. I think all we're trying to do is the first step. That's, to me, that's kind of a second step. What I'm trying to look at now is with the proposals in column R, are they at least the minimum, but not over the benchmark?
That would be it.
And that's where I am, except for the substitute librarians who are still under the minimum right now. Those are the first three I'm hitting that are slightly under the minimum.
Right.
So maybe just highlight those, Bradley, just so we can just do something, so we can come back to that. I don't know. I mean, put a color on them, or some different color. I don't care. Something different so we.
The substitutes are, have been traditionally at minimum wage, which it currently is 1425.
Right. And so they will go up to 15 at least for January. And so this would get them.
And, yeah. And, and the other thing is, by, at least by my recommendation to the select board, I would actually hope you would consider, rather than having to make the adjustments halfway through the year, that anyone that's currently at minimum wage, we change them to what will be the new minimum wage of $15 on January 1st, really on July 1st.
Yeah.
And we won't have to go through that process.
But I think what's, what to me is, I think, wrong, if I'm not mistaken, is over on the current hourly wage for 22. I don't believe they're at 1377. We raised everybody. I thought to 1425.
Correct. Remember, A through.
Oh, this is what we signed earlier on the year before we made the adjustments. I'm sorry.
As of July, what we certified from the treasurer.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So they're, they're there at 1550, which is usually, okay, around the minimum wage, which is a little bit more than minimum wage is what was proposed. John's figure for, or sorry, the Jacob's figure is 1571. Okay.
Now, just to throw another wrench in here, if you put that green column back in there, Ed and Bradley made further modifications and reductions to what I had. Not much, but they trimmed $3,000.
Okay, well.
Because while this is all great.
I want to confuse life here too much because we're still trying to see this.
It's kind of a crunch time.
All right. Before we get down there, though, is there anybody else that is really wacko?
And, and probably there were actually two positions that I know were a good part of that reduction because they were either fully or partially funded through grants and had no budget impact or less than was there.
Yeah. So one of them is, well, one of them is going to be the, the admin assistant COA, which is not, that position is changed to a program coordinator.
Program coordinator, correct.
So that is going to be a different hourly rate.
Right. And what I did on that, because I think it was at 18 from the original spreadsheet and I went back and looked and the PRF put a range of between $17 and $20 on it. So I just, and you can say arbitrarily, I arbitrarily picked 19 in that range for it.
So that's in between what was there? Okay. In terms of the range, okay. So then that, that gets that person close to the benchmark, right, too. All right. So, all right, anybody else that's not hitting at least the minimum, but is not over the benchmark? They all look like they're within, they're less than the benchmark. So that's goal number one for the moment. They're over the minimum, but less than the benchmark. And then we would have to apply another layer of criteria to say, okay, position by position, how much do we want to take, right, from where the proposal is to its relationship to the proposed minimum? Do we want to go another 2%, 5% over the minimum? Do we want to hit for the benchmark? If we go for the benchmark, then we've got some more work to do, right?
We need to calculate the, you know.
Yeah. I mean, you have to calculate all the difference.
And either of those actions, what they look, what.
Yeah. So I mean, I think this is, this, I don't think we're going to make total decisions on this one tonight. But I, I think this shows us. So let me ask a question, though. If the figures that are here, this recommended green column.
Yes.
Are those the figures that are in the spreadsheet?
That 50,000.
The 50,000 that you were trying to get at?
The green column.
Yes, correct.
That is the green column?
Yes.
And that's Ed and.
So you've shown by taking some of the money out of the ARP, out of the main budget into ARPA and doing some other reductions, you can do this green column.
Correct. And if this green column inflates, we'd have to make additional adjustments if you wanted to do it all. Or if it deflates, you could make less of those, take less of those recommendations to stay at a balanced budget.
Okay. But the green column is in relation to the blue column, in relation to, to John's column or is it?
Well, it's actually in relation to both, because actually I did find some that, and somehow I probably missed the substitutes because I was concentrating on minimum wage. But I did find some that were in the blue column originally that weren't as high as the proposed salary minimum 2023. So Bradley and I at least brought those or tried to bring all of those to the proposed salary minimum 2023.
Okay. So I mean, I think if we can see that we've got people up at the minimum per the combination of, of the scales, including the, the recommendations out of the Jacobs with adjustments of the 4%, then it's a matter of, okay, how much? We'd have to go through, I think, when we person, or line by line and say, okay, this one is this percentage. If we wanted to apply percentages across the board consistently, we'd have to say, okay, this is how many percents above this position. This next one is 3%, the other one's 6%. Which are we going to use and try to find the happy medium that we want to actually apply across the board? That's what I think I'm hearing you say.
You said combination of scales.
Combination from what John put forth and what Francine put forth out of Jacobs.
The point I'm making is there's no scale.
There's not a scale on the John's side. No, he's put in hard figures.
Yeah.
Francine's is on the right-hand side. That far right is from the Jacob study. And so what Ed has done is take.
Bradley and Ed, it was a team effort.
Bradley and Ed have taken the mixture between the two.
Well, the only, the only thing I'm going to support, I can tell you right now, is a systematic approach to wages. I'm not going to have someone just pulling a number out of the air. They say, I think they should be at this level. I think that we have a study that was done that's been adjusted to today's figures. And I think we can do what we, exactly what we did last year and say, this position is at this particular grade level and right now they're there. Do we want to move them to minimum, benchmark, or maximum based on the number of years they've been here? That's the only thing I'm going to be able to support. We've had legal trouble several times while I've been on this board because of wage disparities. And I can't do anything arbitrary. If we don't have a system that has some level of parity, we're going to get into trouble.
Well, I don't disagree with, we're going to get in trouble if we don't have something in place. But I would say the exact process used last, that last year was arbitrary. Certain individuals were selected for whatever reason.
It was not arbitrary.
For whatever reason, I have the floor, please. For whatever reason, there was no written document that said, okay, if you're zero to two years, this is it. It was, it was, here's the group. We think this is below. There were a lot of assumptions made, right, wrong, whatever.
John, you weren't here.
It was looking at the grade levels, I think, within the, within the Jacob studies.
We took the people that were 10% off of the chart and we voted as a select, we voted as a select board.
We looked at the.
Okay, guys, come on. We voted as a select board.
Well, she cuts me off. I can't cut her off.
We voted as a select board to use the Jacob study.
Okay, what's done is done. Let's make some progress here. We've got time wasted. Francine.
We looked at the people that had the greatest discrepancy. And because we couldn't do everyone, we started from the bottom to move with the intent being this year and in subsequent years, we're going to continue to move as many people as we can and as equitably as we can. So that, that was the plan. So absent the numbers, because those will change and should be adjusted every year, that, that was the thought behind it.
And I think that they were the best intentions. No, it was the best intentions to get there, but this is another push to go. And personally, I'm, I have no problem supporting the green column. Modify it the way it needs to be if we want to go into the mid. And let's move forward with the, with the updated study by an outside third party. And let's get it all going. And then we're either going to have people that are frozen because the study says you're making 40 cents more than you should. So therefore you have to sit here until the scale moves up, just like it happens in for-profit world.
So you're an individual who just decides that someone's rate should be at a certain point and that's what you're going with?
Well, I'm an individual of, one of five that took the initiative to put something together. Another individual, one of five, took a separate initiative. We, then the town administrator and town accountant merged the two together. So now we got four people working on this and brought it in here for discussion. I'm not just going to say, well, we'll just throw the whole darned thing out because I don't like how you did that. Okay.
Well, I think that what, I think what Francine is presenting is systematic. It's based on a study. It's been updated up till 2022 and it has minimum, benchmark, and maximum. And it compares other towns. And I think that it's a lot more valid than arbitrarily coming up with a number. And I think that's when we get into trouble.
And what is Francine's bottom-line number? I think that's the work that still needs to be done.
Well, I didn't, I didn't do the calculation, first of all, because I, I think my original facts were not correct. But I didn't have any other source other than what I had and some of them were dated. And so I decided to leave that blank. I just gave current and I cited the, you know, the, the different phases.
Will it help just to say what the categories were in the Jacob study, grade one, two, three, four, five, and who was in them? And highlight those positions so that we can see how they are grouped and if they, you know, as we go through and then look at those?
If you want to highlight them, I have them right here.
Well, I want them highlighted on here for Bradley to work on. So.
Custodian van driver.
Custodian, van driver, and transfer station attendant are the first ones as one group. Custodians, so make them all the same color, whatever those are. Pick a color.
Well, do you have the one I did?
This is it.
No, I know, but not up on the screen.
No, van driver and transfer station attendant.
But, but the point was, and this is where we all have to, I mean, we have to make some decisions. In the Jacob study, they kind of, he kind of, and I know he did it with a PBB. I don't know how many people were on board with it, but he did. He kind of, we have basically 20 grades on our scale. He collapsed those 20 into six.
Right.
By virtue of reviewing all the job descriptions and coming up, you know, and categorizing them based on that. So that, that was, that was a bigger thing. What we put in between minimum and benchmark could be. What we put in between minimum and benchmark could be two years, three-year steps, so that we move along. I didn't go that way until, and unless.
Admin assistant treasurer.
This is something people will accept and agree to, it's not, it's just a recommendation, it's just a suggestion.
Senior tech circulation.
It gives us something to look at to start the plan, that's all.
While we're doing this, we're just going to highlight these in different colors, and this will be a next exercise, because I don't think we're going to come to conclusion tonight.
Okay.
All right? We need to be keeping on some level of progress forward here. CPC historian library, also same category, circulation desk librarian, sorry, it's up in the library, and so we got senior tech, CPC historian, and circulation desk, all three of those, and the substitutes, all the substitutes, all the library guys, that's all the same.
And assistant town clerk.
Assistant town clerk is the other one. That's all grade twos for the study. Grade threes are only two, assistant to the highway superintendent and assistant accountant.
Which, why would you not match the assistant accountant the same as the assistant treasurer collector, if they have to step into that role and take over?
Yeah, it was arbitrary.
I mean, that was one thing that was supposed to be changed seven years ago, it never happened.
The study that was done wasn't arbitrary.
All right, so number, that's grade threes, grade fours, assistant to the town administrator, assistant treasurer collector, water technician.
Yeah, see, assistant to the town administrator is not.
Water technician.
Is not above assistant town.
Youth librarian, we're not going to discuss the innards of the study, I just want to get the grades down here.
But that affects how they get paid.
If the original study.
And health agent.
Well, it doesn't matter, because it's flawed, it's not going to be understood or believed here anyways.
Youth librarian and health agent, we're all, same with the water tech, so did you get the youth librarian? Yeah, okay, fine, thank you. Almost done. Fives, COA director, library director, town accountant. Town accountant, treasurer collector. Town clerk, principal assessor, building commissioner, and health director, all the same category, if you will, grade. Level six, water super, highway super. Police and fire chief and town administrator, last three there. Did we miss anybody?
There's one up there, I think that doesn't have a class here, assistant, admin assistant to the treasurer.
Admin assistant treasurer, it's got to be up in the other ones.
It's in there twice, you got the first color.
One's vacant session.
Okay, all right.
I think principal assessor's there twice, too.
Yeah, it's because, yeah, the way they did it. So the veterans agent is in there, but that's not in the Jacob study, I don't.
It's a stipend position.
Yeah. So is the tree warden.
Right, so they're not, they're not counted in here, right. So, and the, yeah, so, yeah, veterans agent is stipend, and tree, tree warden is stipend.
Tree warden doesn't get paid.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, that's, that gets us the grouping, if we wanted to proceed the way that Reni is suggesting, within the grade levels now, here's what all of those, so the grouping of the reds are one thing, the grouping of the greens are all one category of personnel, according to the Jacob study, the way I understand this, so that might be another exercise going forward, okay? But anyway, just to reiterate, the way we've understood it, with the work that Ed and Bradley have done, everything in that recommended W column, what's the total of that, Bradley, please, number W? $50,198, that was the figure that we were working with on that other spreadsheet, that with a couple of reductions and pulling certain things out for ARPA, that got us to do all of that. So just to put it there, and that's maybe as far as we can go with this, this evening. I think I would like to, yeah, go ahead, John.
Just clarify for me, because maybe it got discussed while I was at the PBB. Are we not under, are we seriously entertaining moving the town meeting, or assuming no vote happened, I forget, no vote happened while I was in the room, right?
No vote happened.
Right now, if we're still staying on our same track, how much more time do we have to spend on this, before we have to sign?
Basically, until Monday at the, I was super outside latest, right? At the latest, and that doesn't account all the articles that have still got to be drafted, so.
Do we have any placeholder meetings already scheduled?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we're within, we're under the 48-hour rule, although I guess this classifies as.
It's 7:45 on Monday.
Chris, the moderator is asking to be recognized.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Question is basically for Ed. Can you adjourn to a time certain at the end of this evening, to tomorrow? Because a town meeting is dissolved, it can never be, but if the town meeting was to be adjourned, we would adjourn to a time certain, or be another day, a week, or whatever. Can you adjourn tonight to a time, town, sorry, time certain, be it tomorrow, be it, you know, whenever?
Why would we need to do?
Well, I think he's thinking, does that get us out of the public, the open meeting law?
Yeah, right.
Get us around the 48-hour rule, if we say we're just continuing tonight's meeting to tomorrow at 7 o'clock?
Okay, well, given that we don't have everybody here, and we have one member that has to leave in 10 minutes.
We still have a quorum.
We do. But you had raised, in your absence.
Yeah, I had 7.7 pluses to go into June, the governor, COVID, you're up against the wall, you've never been this late, there's no, you have to meet anyway for a special town meeting in June, this is rushed, and this has to be done with summaries and explanations, and we have to have the police department to post it, you know, in one day with no allowance, so why? This would be like a slam dunk, not a slam dunk, alley-oop pass, and it's not going to work for town meeting.
We do have the authority, both out of the governor's office and KP Law, to move it no later than certainly the end of June, so I mean.
I think the beginning of June, June 7.
A couple of weeks could give us the, I mean, we have to figure out if we have the school available, right?
If it's postponed, my recommendation would be June 7. Moderator's available, the town clerk's available, Nora School is available.
Well, we have free cash certified by then.
We will.
But we won't by the next.
We will have free cash certified around May 3.
Lucy, are there considerations on your end?
I mean, rather than doing two town meetings, I mean, I think that's the issue, too, so we're not, because if we don't have, if we don't have free cash certified, if we continued on here and we don't have free cash ready, then we're going to have to come back.
Right, and we can do the capital items, so.
All the capital items and some of those issues, right? So we'd have to have another meeting in.
In June anyway, so why not just have one in June, instead of spending the money on two different town meetings?
So if we go with June 7, we have, we have the full week in between, so that means we have to have this wrapped up by Monday, May 23, correct? Am I right in my dates?
Something like that, probably, yeah. Which ought to be possible, if we get our certification back by around the 3rd or 4th, is what you're really expecting.
Did they already submit the stuff to DOR? Did she already submit? She already submitted the free cash calculation and the proof and the combined balance sheet, the tax reconciliate receivables.
You submitted those to her.
You did, and the.
I don't know what she submitted, I just know my reports are all submitted.
SOI?
She said that, yeah, that's submitted, yeah.
So if we were able to do that, then, yeah, with Memorial Day weekend coming in, and the Memorial Day parade, et cetera, in between, I would like this to be done by, certainly by the 23rd of, I mean, our meeting would be the 24th normally, we said last week, that our regular meetings would be May 10 and May 24th, for the month of May. I guess personally, I'm hearing lots of arguments to postpone this. I personally think we've made a lot of progress, but I don't feel we are ready, and I don't feel like, you know, I think we've got more to do on this, to figure out exactly where we want to adjust salaries, I think we had made ourselves a commitment that this was important to try and make some adjustments, and not only to retain, but attract people, but, you know, if we don't do this right, then we're just making another mess that we have to undo later on. So is there any reason that anybody seemed to not postpone the town meeting? Is there anything that's coming up that, I think, Robert, you mentioned one, I forget, which, I forget what it was.
There was an issue around the bylaw.
Bylaw, right.
Quickly for.
It was the bylaw issue.
The governor Baker approved an annual meeting to be held in June, one plus new new SB members after town election, we will need to meet in June anyway, you have a home month or more to efficiently massage your budget figures rather than force feeding them in the submission tonight, more time to fine-tune you to discuss on the articles and all the, or on nothing tonight, and again, town administrator Gibson will have more breathing room to create a stronger warrant with its accompanying explanation summaries, our police department does not now have to post the warrant copies with only one day, and an argument committed about COVID with the families, the school kids and the families being, now the COVID numbers go up, and we can do this and not go against our bylaw under the circumstances of Baker doing this.
I'm in, I'm not opposed to pushing it out, but if we push it out, I propose June 21st, if it has to happen, and I don't know if it has to be on a Tuesday, but if it has to be a Tuesday, then 21st, after school's closed.
After school is closed?
The 14th is Black Day, so we probably shouldn't have it on that, school's closed on the 16th, you have it on the 21st. Having it on the 7th tells me that, what's going to happen is what just happened here, where you have to give up an entire vacation week to be here, so we can't accomplish what we do, and it sounds like if we say on the 7th that I've got to give up all Memorial Day weekend and week two leading up to it, because we're going to be here, so just push it out two more weeks, just leave it in June.
I do not recommend as late as the 21st, because school will be out and people will have left on vacation.
But we only need 25.
If you want to go to 14th, the 14th, fine, but I wouldn't go any later than that.
Okay, with the 14th.
We want as many people as possible, I mean, I think that's the goal of a town meeting.
One other thing.
It isn't going to be.
Are you available on the 14th? I think you said yes if I said a special, are you available on the 14th?
You're my priority for town meeting, so even if I did, I'd change it. It's never going to be a perfect scenario.
The only thing I'll have to, I'll have to check on is, I know the school's available on the 7th, I'll have to find out on the 14th.
But I'm coming back on the 14th.
Yeah, Lucy.
Can I just please make a suggestion, that next year, we please start this process earlier?
We, we actually did start it earlier.
I know that.
We were starting back in December.
But this is the second year in a row that we're pushing it off, and.
I know.
I know COVID is still around, but, and it's not going away too quickly, so you should also talk about whether you're having it indoors or outdoors, so just, my recommendation is just, please, sorry.
I respect your position as a town clerk, but I think the hang-up here, and what's causing this delay, is we're trying to adjust the wages of the non-collective employees.
I get that.
I mean, I think we could all say, let's just push it, if we, and we won't, but if we did say, let's just push that out till next year and not deal with it, we'd probably prepare to confront with everything and make it happen.
And I have to add to that. I understand that, I just.
And I just have to add to that, that some of the information that we need to make decisions was very late in coming, not the budget necessary for the departments, but we didn't, we didn't have a clear picture on what the revenue was. I don't know how you spend money unless you know what you have to spend.
I get it.
I'm just saying that.
I know, and thank you.
Any reason why, from the school standpoint, that information needs to be obtained earlier than later? I mean, the school approved the budget, but is there any reason why delaying this would negatively impact the schools for any reason?
I don't think so, I don't, that's.
So when does school actually break?
16th.
16th, okay, so there's.
Assuming we have no worse no days.
Right, okay, so we have an idea to possibly do it the 14th, is that what I'm hearing, rather than 7th?
Could it be a Tuesday?
I think it does, per our bylaw.
The bylaws, bylaws says Tuesday, yeah.
Try and stick with that, I mean, let's not go too crazy with COVID.
Well, I mean, you had it on a Saturday, I don't know if you can get a court order.
With COVID, that's fine, with COVID last year, we had the exception to do it whenever we kind of deemed it was possible, and we did it on Saturdays when we did it out at Labrie Field, but I think we should try and stick with a Tuesday night.
My logic is, if we go to the 14th, that means we have to be done by the 7th, which puts us past the Memorial Day weekend. Stay on the 7th, we have to have, we're going to, we're going to be here that Thursday night, Friday, going right into the long week.
Well, I'm, I'm going to.
If we don't get it all straightened out, three weeks.
I mean, I'm going to hope we're not, because I think we basically are 90% there. I think our last hurdle is the wage issues that we've been talking about tonight. We have a regular meeting on the 10th, and I think we need to really focus on what these look like on the 10th to be able to move forward and make a decision on them.
So two, two items, I guess, is one, understanding that someone needs to leave.
Yep.
We want to vote on that, but then the second point is, could we just talk about clear direction, whatever it's going to be, who's going to do what between now and when, to take care of, at least try and resolve those questions?
And if you just come to a consensus on maybe what you'd like to see, Bradley and I can get there, but, you know what, I feel a little bit kicked in the teeth tonight, and I know, know it's not intentional or anything, but, you know, we took it, we did our best, sorry it didn't get closer to what you'd like to see, but if you give us a little direction, I think we can get it, get it there for you.
I appreciate the fact that you moved things over, and I think that it was a good basic plan, I just want to use a systematic way of increasing wages. I think we all want to improve wages, I just would rather have a systematic way of doing it so that we're using some benchmark, that's all. And I agree with Chris, I think we're all on the same page in terms of our intentions, and I think we're 90% there, and we have another month and a half now, so it's not exactly like two weeks.
But let's not, let's not drag it out, is my point, and let's, I want to get this done, we've got many more things to do. Lucy, can we finish, please? Do you have something else?
I just wanted to say, don't forget the election is May 17.
We know that.
So there are going to be, well, there might be more finance committee members, so they might have some say.
Well, unless there's some write-ins, I don't think we have any candidates, do we, at this point? Nobody got nominated? Okay, yeah, nobody, yeah, nobody got nominated at the caucus, right? Yeah, right, correct, Lucy, I'm going to see, John?
Yeah, no, so as far as direction goes, I mean, again, you've shown where 50,000, give or take, 48,000 can come out, and how you guys got creative with the numbers. So to me, 48,000 is the number that's available. How it gets applied over on the far side, I'm certainly opening to listening to, I mean, wage scales like that are usually a 15 to 20-year period, so you got your entry level, you got your exit level, you got your midpoint, if you want to say it's 15 years, you take the year of employment, you line them up and see where it goes, you fall somewhere around the 48,000, then you're not going to get objection from me.
Yeah, so do you want to take, like, all those per the category, say, say the blue category? Take a look at the blue category and figure out the percentage for the benchmark versus what's in the green column?
Well, I would say, the blue, the blue are all on the same pay scale, right?
Yeah, they're, well, they're in the same grade pool.
Right, so on Francine's tab, they're all in the same, they all have the same midpoint, $22, 3 cents.
Those couple do, I don't know that the other grades do, that's, that may be the easiest one.
So, but if that's the case, and if we say that's a 15-year ban, X, it's X, it's because it's either going to be a 10, a 15, or a 20-year ban, right? Whatever it is, somebody with less than a year should be at 1785, and somebody, if it's a 15-year ban, with 15 or plus years, would be max at 2856, and then they would get the yearly 2% as the entire ban moved up.
And, and whatever adjustments would come, how often you, when this chart is upgraded?
Right.
Correct, yeah, the annual reassess.
The yearly, but I mean, you're saying that, I guess the question for me is, is a 15-year ban realistic, or is 10 years more realistic? I mean, in terms of our town employees?
Yeah.
Well, so if I was doing this in the outset.
You're just going to do it 555?
Say, what is, what is the organization's history of length of longevity?
Oh, the mic, oh, sorry, yeah, the mics, sorry, yeah, we're sharing mics here, we need another mic in this room when we talk to Jeff.
No, I mean, so 10 years, fine, I mean, it's, again, we got to pick a number on what it's going to be, a five-year, 10-year, 15-year, or 20-year. 10-year, 15-year, 20-year. Most scales are 10-year in the industry, but, but even if you take that as a starting point, and again, giving direction to Ed and Bradley to go back, do that calculation based on link. And then here's the bigger question. Is it time in that position or time with the town? And may or may not apply to anybody.
And actually, I just asked that question of Jen, and I said, time in the position, and then I double clarified it and asked, give us both. I think it's time and position is more pertinent, but I've asked her both.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you two, if a department head wants to bring someone in, they've had six years of experience, I mean, you want to be able to raise them up to where, you want to hire them.
Right. So this could be like a one-year, five-year, the benchmark might be the five-year period, and 10 would be the maximum.
Max.
So 1, 5, and 10.
Right. But then the key is, is that scale gets adjusted every year based on the COLA, which is usually tied to the Consumer Price Index, not just the traditional 2%.
No, correct.
So this, and keep in mind, with inflation going up next year, that's going to be a 13%, 14% adjustment.
Yeah. No, that's true. I mean, not 2% for sure. But I think what I'm hearing you say is that, that minimum is like this, the beginning one year of service.
Correct.
Benchmark is five years.
Yep.
And the maximum is 10 years of service. That's what I'm hearing.
And then where do people fall on that scale? What's the grand total of that dollar amount come out to? How close to 48,000 are you?
I'll actually take a look at what the percentage difference is between the beginning and the end. And if a 10-year turns out to be a 6% increase each year, I'll just spread it out and maybe go to 15.
Okay.
So it's consistent through all bands.
Right. I'll try, I'll try to adjust it so it falls maybe between 2% and 4% in a year.
And I think do that via, you know, for all the different, I think there were six, six separate color bands, right? So those are the grade, the grouping of positions per the Jacob study. Okay. So we had the blues and the greens and the whatever, reds. That's all the cohort, right? The peer group that were all in that same gradation per the study that was done. And take a look at what these mean percentage-wise versus the green column W to see what, what's being proposed as the benchmark and how consistent is it within that cohort.
Right. And for the purposes of the exercise, which I'm guessing is getting tasked to the finance team, right, between, correct?
I'm thinking.
I want to make sure it's not coming, if it is coming back to PBB, I want to know about it. But if it's not coming back to PBB and somebody else is doing it, that's fine with me. But for the purposes of whoever's going to do the exercises, the recommendations within green as far as our adjustments will, at least for illustration purposes, be incorporated and carried forward. So we can see that. Then we can decide whether or not we want to grant those hours or not. But see what the impact is based off the recommendation.
Right.
Right? Okay.
And I would like to suggest that it's Ed, Bradley, and maybe Jen are involved in pulling this together. Is that doable?
I don't have an objection to that, assuming our finance committee over here agrees.
All right. So let's, let's assume that, if that's clear enough. Do we need more clarity?
Do you have a recommendation?
My question would be, what if the proposed minimum is less than what the person is making now, and they're only like, I'm just going to use the assistant accountant as an example. Their current salary is 1966. You said proposed minimum is 1785, and they've only been here for a couple of months. Do you, how do you gauge those people that have only been here for a year and their proposed minimum is less than what they're getting paid now? You know, so I mean, you kind of have to gauge that, too, so.
You can't go back, so they get a 2% COLA, and that's it? I mean, that was a decision that was made on hiring.
So those are some of the levels that we have to make decisions.
Do you have other recommendations, the finance committee, in terms of this whole thing?
I guess I think it's, and I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't do this. I think it's kind of late in the game in terms of, like, last year you had a plan and you went to, you know, the lowest-paid people, like you said, which was great. And maybe once that was done, we started, started looking at this again to say, okay, what's the next level? And how do we go from there? And not be like, oh, my gosh, we want to do this two weeks before town meeting. You know what I mean? So that's.
I get it. And we also got an email from the fire chief.
Yeah.
It had a whole long plan, and to me, it felt like all of this is coming at us and we have to decide tonight.
Well, no, and I think.
So I'm glad that we're putting it off, but it does seem like it's a lot. And just so you know, John, last year, the PQB was very unhappy with us, and I know you weren't part of it, because they had a chart of their own that had not been updated with COLAs and so forth, and they were using one thing, and the Select Board voted to use Jacobs because we felt like we had to decide that we're going to use something because we felt it was more relevant, and it was only, it was pretty recent. So I think there's been a little bit of difficulty between PQB and the Select Board in terms of, do we go to them first? Do we not go to them first? What chart are you using? So we just wanted to use a chart that had some validity.
Okay. Ed, do you have any further comments on this?